Pardon?
Are you on, Chairman?
I am.
He is.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Malier is going to open us with the invocation.
Bow your heads with me, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the rights we have in this country, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we make decisions for ourselves, our neighbors, our county, and the citizens. Some of these decisions are hard, but please be with us, to help us to make these decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, the Republic, the nation, God, for all.
Let the record show, we have four of five commissioners. I believe Commissioner Galis is out of town. And then we have minutes from the July 20th meeting. For approval, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Yeah, changes to the agenda, Mr. Johnson?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Special recognitions, I know we have two, and I'll go to the first, Mr. Douglas Martinevich. Is that how you say it? When I come on down, you want to speak about an ordinance for semi trucks and jake brakes. Floor is yours. Please tell us your name and address for the record.
My name is Douglas Martinevich.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-five fifty-two Scotts Ferry Road, Aplin, Georgia. Okay, the complaint I've got is, I've got another place in Aplin, right in Aplin, right across the bridge, and other people that were supposed to be here tonight didn't show up. But burning jake brakes coming down Aplin Hill, are you familiar with that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with jake braking on that hill, but I know where it is.
Yeah, well, hundreds of trucks come through Aplin now, pretty much every day. Dump trucks, semis, everything. But there's some people that drive semis even unloaded with a flatbed, that they put the jake brake on. Are you familiar with what a jake brake is? Very, very annoying. It's loud. Sometimes when I wake up early in the morning, no traffic on the road at 5:15. Hear a jake brake coming down that hill. And they won't cut it off until they get to the monument. And I guess they think it's real funny to wake these people up. Even though I stay there, my cabin is probably two or three hundred feet from the road at least. So I don't hear it all, but the other people do. I've talked to all of them, and they agree totally with me. And my cousin's here, and he lives up across from Calke Church. He has the same problem. Called the commis-- well, I called the commission office, but I got 3-1-1 receptionist. And she basically told me there was nothing that could be done because they'd had a lot of complaints in Harlem on Sardis Road with the same thing. Well, and then something said, either by Commissioner Galis or her, about the trucking industry has a big lobby. But there's sixteen other states that have regulations on jake brakes, when you can use them. A jake brake is primarily used when you're coming down in the mountains to break the truck, to keep from burning brakes out. And I don't think they will burn out coming down the hill in Aplin. I don't think they'll burn out anywhere in Columbia County. But that's the way it is, and it really doesn't make any sense for somebody to do that. And I talked to the state highway, talked to two people there, and one guy, I think he thought, real cute, but he kept saying, "Can you hear me? Can you hear me?" And then hung up. But the last guy before he did that, he said, "There's got to be some kind of regulation on jake brakes, or we can even put up a sign." And so called back, 3-1-1, and I talked to the commissioner's office again. "You would please have Commissioner Galis call me." He called me, it was called there Monday, and he called me late Wednesday afternoon, and I talked to him about it. But he had never heard of a jake brake. You know, some people call them compression brakes, engine brakes, jake brakes. But, you know, it still makes the same noise, and the noises are made louder, it's depending on the engine size. And some of them will rattle windows, especially some of the people, as you know, in Aplin. It's, some of the houses are right on the street, there are not people, not many people that live there. But it's a problem, and it's going to be more of a problem in some there because of Daniel Marshall's land selling. The houses built coming from that direct, coming from J.D. Howell's store coming down that hill. They're going to start complaining. So anyway, I don't know what you can do, but I think an ordinance would have to be done.
Can we do, Scott?
I know Matt's already looked into this, so I'll turn it over to Matt. There are some things, there are some ordinances we could do. Matt, you want to talk about the noise part of it? That's really where it comes in.
Right, so our existing noise ordinance goes into effect 11:00 PM, and it goes to 6:00 AM, I believe. So if it's happening at 5:15, the current ordinance is already in effect. In order to put a sign up on the road, it is a state route, we have to go through the state for permitting. I did reach out to the state and ask what they required of us. They basically said that the commission would have to pass an ordinance, saying you cannot have the jake brakes on the road at any time. The sign--
Anywhere.
On that road, wherever the commission deems. The sign they will allow us to put up, literally will say, I've actually got a picture. He sent me a picture of what he will allow us to put up, and it just says, "Noise ordinance, code section," and we would list the code section that the commission creates, and then Columbia County. It doesn't say jake brake, it doesn't say loud stereos.
Can you get a picture that said, "No jake brake"?
There are, there are some, I mean, there are some states that allow that, and there are some that say, "No jake braking specifically." But this being a Georgia highway, we have to comply with DOT rules. And around the state of Georgia, that's all they have done, is the noise piece of it.
Right. So they will allow it, it just won't, it won't say jake brake.
We have other ones in the county. There's one in front of Brandon Wild on Washington Road, if you've ever noticed it.
This picture I actually have is actually the one they permitted for the city of Harlem. The issue you were speaking of, Harlem passing ordinance, noise ordinance, this is what DOT allowed them to install in the city of Harlem.
Well, Ball Ground, Georgia passed one, and fine is a hundred dollars a night. So it's been done in Georgia, and also Meriwether County, so it's not anything--
Yeah, absolutely, it can be done.
Right, but what if it had to be a county road?
A county road is different. If it was a county road, you could put whatever sign you deemed. This being a state route, we can only put the sign of the state allows us. Now, you can pass an ordinance that says, "Thousand dollar fine, nine days in jail for using of a jake brake." You can absolutely do that. DOT is not going to let us put that on a sign. It's just going to say, "Noise ordinance."
Yeah.
That's the ordinance.
Then you have to have the sheriff enforce it.
Somebody's got to be there to write the ticket. Sign does no good if somebody's not going to be there to write the ticket.
That's exactly right. And they could park in my drive at night because law enforcement obviously either parks at Calke Baptist Church, at the ballpark during the night, and I'd be glad for them to park in my drive, you know what I mean? He'd get, he'd be out of, not out of view, he'd be on the street, but whoever's doing it would be stopped, basically.
So what would have to change with the ordinance that we currently have? Will it, does it suffice?
Current ordinance would work after 11:00 PM. So during the day, it would not. But after 11:00 PM, it would work, 11 till 6:00 AM, that's, that's in effect, would work.
Without a sign, a deputy could sit in his driveway now.
Yeah.
They would be in violation of noise order.
The deputy could write the citation, the judge would then determine if he was in violation.
It's, well, the thing about it is, there is a noise ordinance in the state of Georgia. However, it's not enforced. It's not enforced by the state patrol, and it's not enforced by the county officials in every state because the law is so vague that they just don't do it. It's at their discretion and all, and there's cars come through there, usually on the weekends. They may have straight pipes. I can sit on my screen porch, and I can hear them get on the interstate. If that's not too loud, I don't know what is. I don't want to be a party poop or anything, because when I was young, I drove very fast.
Don't tell all your sins, not where you are.
You know, and I've got a fast car now, but I make sure I'm driving the speed limit.
Yeah, we can post a sign if we pass an ordinance, which would basically just extend the noise ordinance. But I don't think we could do it 24/7.
Good. Again, our current noise ordinance, as he mentioned, not just ours, all of them, they're very subjective. It's basically determined, the person who's there to witness it determines whether or not it is excessive.
It's not decibels or some kind of mechanical measurement. So it would be very hard to prove, to prosecute, to make--
Which is why it's rarely written. In my 21 years of writing, I've written thousands of tickets, and I don't think I ever wrote one.
Right. But I tell you what, cars are different than they used to be. A buddy of mine just bought a brand-new Ferrari, and I went out in the garage and cranked it. I said, "I want to hear this thing run," and he cranked it up, and he said, "At a better time, you can come by and drive it." But he cranked it up, and it was, it was like a thousand bumblebees got on. He said, "Oh, heck, I left the power button down," you know, for the street. And he pushed the button, it was completely not silent, but it was really a lot more moderate. And, but anyway, I'd like y'all--
How about listen to what our options are, and see what we can do? I mean--
We can look into it, Mr. Chairman. I think the only option is, is to pass an ordinance, whether or not we want to try to enforce that there. Anytime we pass an ordinance, and I understand what he's saying, I think he's got a good point. And we need to keep Aplin quiet, need to keep it pristine, I understand. I think the challenge that we're up against is, we have the same thing on Washington Road, and it's almost never enforced. So we're going to go through a lot of, whatever the procedure is to do it, get the state to do it, pass the ordinance. I think it's going to be very hard--
State to do anything, other than if we pass an ordinance and stick a sign up.
Yeah, so I don't know that it's really going to accomplish the problem, or, you know, accomplish the result that he's looking for.
Well--
But it's something, we can look at it.
It's, the thing about it, it's not that many trucks that you, I'm talking about, really. Because I walk every day in Aplin. But it's just certain, certain type trucks, I don't know if they're young drivers or not, and it'll tell you on the internet that usually truck drivers are like kids that just got a new toy. They want chrome on it, and they want them to be loud, and they love to hear the loud noises. You know what I mean? That's fine if it's at 10 o'clock in the morning, but the kid that lives up the street from me, he puts up cell towers. You know what I mean? He's up at all hours of the night when he gets home, and then he has to leave out early. And I asked him the other day, I said, "Will you come to the meeting with me?" He said, "Yeah, if I'm in town, I'll be there." Because the other morning, one woke me up at 4:00 in the morning.
But it says, "We already have a noise ordinance."
Yep.
So we can already, we can put the sign up, right?
We have to apply to DOT.
Why don't we apply for DOT and put the sign up?
Yeah, that'd be great, because that may do the trick for these guys. Because the guy that owns the truck, he doesn't want to be doing it because this thing just didn't start. It's been going on a while, and it's one guy that owned a construction company. And I was talking to another guy that owns a construction company. He said, "If you ever hear my guy doing that," he said, "You let me know." Said he'll stop doing it. So, you know what I mean? It's, it's not like it's a real hard thing, but bufflers, and then it's a lot of traffic going up 47 now. When, what my cousin told me, from when the state had that road, I think it's a county road now, and it, 47--
I don't know.
They took down the sign, a sign of 30,000-pound limit, and there's a lot of trucks. And that is one dangerous road if you've ever ridden from Aplin to Leah. Those shoulders--
We thank you, we're looking at putting the sign up, and then my suggestion is, if you see the deputy sitting out there, tell him to sit in your yard between 11 and--
Well, that'd be great, because one guy, I started riding an exercise bike because it was so hot. He said, "Man," he stopped one day, and he said, "I ain't seen you in a while," you know? And I said, "Well, I've been on the bike," you know? But I was worried about you, so I talked to him, and I see those guys up there all the time. But I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Columbia County Fire and Rescue, the boot drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I believe that Columbia County is one of the best places to live in the United States because of the generosity of citizens. Although during COVID restrictions, over the last six months, Columbia County Fire Rescue has raised over $100,000. So tonight, we are here to present checks for my last boot drive in May, when we raised $63,000, sending tonight to two great organizations, Burn Foundations of America and Columbia County Community Connections. I would like to ask Robert Yon, Captain Robert Yon, our distributor for our boot drive, to present the drives check this year.
Buddy, I'm Captain Robert Yon with Columbia County Fire Rescue, and I like to introduce Chief of the Burn Foundation of America. It wasn't for her, or in Mr. Steve Chalker.
Director of Operations.
So, but I want to thank you for everything you've done to help us-- Oh, yes, ma'am. Never turned down a hug.
Well, I love coming to these boot drives, because these guys are so engaged and just fun to be around. All of our staff looks forward to doing that.
Yeah, I just want to thank Columbia County Fire Department for doing this. I mean, they're very dedicated. They don't just stand out there and hold the boot. They encourage people, they engage people, because who doesn't love the firefighters and the first responders? I mean, for what they do, we can't thank them enough for doing that, you know, for what they do every day, but the boot drive as well. And of course, to everybody that donated, you know, that's, that's what it's all about, and the generosity is just unbelievable. I agree with Chief Pascal about Columbia County and the community that we live in, and it's great.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Captain Griffith. He would present the check to Columbia County Community--
I'm Captain Gary Griffith with the Fire Department. I'd like to introduce Ms. Jenkins with Columbia County Community Connections of support, always.
I don't want to be-- I'm not sure if I'm finding allergies or not, so I don't want to make anyone nervous. But this means so much to our organization. As a 501(c)(3), we are dependent upon grants and money from the community. So to get this, we can ensure that we're having after-school programs and making sure that our children are safe, but also that we have the volunteerism from our firefighters. They come up, and our children are absolutely excited to see them, from cooking out to just the toy drive with them, with Walmart. They're just incredibly happy to see our firemen, so it means a lot, and we're so thankful for the citizens of Columbia County for all the work that they do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. This wouldn't be possible without the great women and men of Columbia County Fire Rescue. Thank you for everybody's participation.
Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have a consent agenda in front of you. Each of these items has been through the Necessary Committee and received the very votes to be placed on this consent agenda. So if it still meets with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them all. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Commissioner Malier, do you have the first item?
I do. I make a motion to approve a lease with the State Properties Commission for the Department of Community Supervision, contingent upon approval by the county attorney.
Second. Matt, do you want to?
I can, I can give it to you. This is just the lease with the State Properties Commission that actually incorporates the community supervision piece of the Justice Center Annex. We just got held up because of the supersede us, so it's, we're to the point now. There are a few legal things that we just need to work out, legal descriptions and those sort of things, but we're fine with it.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now wait, excuse me.
I have one more, very important one today. Number I-2A-1 is Resolution 21-35 to establish, establish a millage rate for purposes of computing ad valorem taxes on property in Columbia County for calendar year 2021. I make a motion to approve Resolution 21-35 as presented and authorized the chairman to sign all required forms and documents.
Second.
Johnson, you want to give us the rundown?
I will, and Ms. Reese, if she wants to add anything. You will see the breakdown here of our, of our millage rate. This is a millage rate rollback, so you are reducing taxes in Columbia County. We don't typically get a whole lot of fanfare about that, but this commission has, has been very aggressive when it comes to lowering the tax rate and still being able to accomplish things. And one thing that's significant about this rollback is, our total millage rate is going to be rolled back to a, a tax rate that, that we last saw in 2011, so 10 years ago. We were at this tax rate, and, and we've moved up a little bit. We did the GO bond, obviously the voters voted on that, so we added here. But you rolling things back and then paying the GO bond off, and as we move forward with that, and as our county has grown, we've been able to go back to a tax rate that we had 10 years ago. Most communities aren't doing that. So I congratulate this board and our staff and, and the folks in Columbia County that make this a great place. Leanne, you got anything you want to add about the millage rate? You have any questions for Ms. Reese about the numbers?
You good with them? That matters. Questions, comments? I'll just, again, just thank you, Scott, and Leanne, and really the whole staff, because at the time when you across the country, taxes going up and all this, just government giveaways, it's frankly, it's fun to be part of a community that continues to try to drive the taxes down, so I appreciate that. Make that happen. Any other questions? All in favor of lowering, lowering the millage rate, raise your right hand. Done.
We have media here. Somebody, please shout this from the mountaintops for us tomorrow, okay?
On now to Commissioner Richardson, I believe.
Skinner.
Yeah.
I am just out of sorts.
Item 2B-1. I make a motion to withdraw request for rezoning for R2 to C2, property located at tax map 072A, B Row 8-5.
Second.
This is a request to go from R2 to C2 for a Dairy Queen on Bel Air Road. Planning commission had a substitute motion to go to CC instead of C2. That failed as well, so this does come as a recommendation to deny the rezoning. However, we did receive a request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
And just for clarification purposes, Mr. Skinner, if you would be, would consider amending your motion to allow the applicant to withdraw?
I rescind it and allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 21-06, amended the District Code of Columbia County, Georgia Chapter 8, Article 3, permits to become effective upon the date after the second reading.
Second.
This is an ordinance that will require someone putting a driveway in, a standalone driveway. Somebody lives on Ridge Road, for example, wants to build a house on a lot, wants to tie in their driveway to the county right of way, through the county right of way to the county roadway. They'll have to come through a permitting process to make sure they're building properly. They'll, they'll make sure that the price has pipes in the ground, the right topping for the driveway. If they're going across a multi-use trail, for example, Evans-Lox Road has multi-use trail. We'll make sure that the multi-use trail is protected. So this basically just gives us an opportunity to make sure we see what's happening and prevent illegal items from being installed, such as head walls that are immovable or not breakaway. If a car were to run off the road and hit it, cause some serious damage. So the pass has not been done. We're starting to grow a lot faster than we have been in the past. We feel it's, it's time to get this established.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number 21-32, driveway encroachment policy manual and driveway encroachment permit.
Second.
So the ordinance that you just said the first reading on establishes a policy, this is the policy that it references? This will be the document, the living document that we use. So as, as engineering standards change, as the county grows, this will be the document that we constantly update to make sure that we're doing best for the county, putting in driveways.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Legal matters.
No legal matters tonight.
Taking a break, are you? You needed one.
Under a supersede us.
No more supersede us. Uh, no requests for review by committee, any public participation or comments? Hearing none. Executive session items, which I believe-- Right now, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept donation from Timothy and Marilyn Logan, parcel 043043, for right-of-way permanent and temporary Hunt Road project.
Second.
The drainage project Rosenbridge is installing, need these easements to get the drainage in.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to accept the donation from James and Susan Hunt, parcel 043044A, for right-of-way permanent and temporary easements for the Hunt Road--
Second.
Questions?
I make a motion to approve $1,500 to Pamela McClady, parcel 0-- Right-of-way permanent and temporary creek to Gateway Waterline Project.
Second.
The extension of a new 16-inch line helped keep that water flowing to Gateway area, keep where our major growth is happening, keep that area completely saturated.
Nice. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to accept a donation from Plaza Evans LLC, parcel 075K, right-of-way permanent and temporary Ronald Reagan Project.
Second.
The sewer line project that crosses Ronald Reagan Drive, this sewer line needs to be replaced.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $2,669 to Emmanuel and Lynn Hernandez, parcel 077G, and $1,200 to Eugene Shipps, $116 to Carmella and Robert Anderson, parcel 077G13, right-of-way permanent and temporary easements for the, for Phase 2 project.
Second.
Extension of a new sewer line along Recreek.
All in favor, raise your right hand. One more.
Make a motion to accept a donation from Robert Parker, parcel 0748141, David Capel, parcel 0748158, Cole Hunter, parcel 0738551, Judy Ships, parcel 074G020, Georgine below, parcel 074G020, Crawford Mill, parcel 074025A, parcel 073A547, John Jennings, parcel 097, Anya Young, parcel 0748145, and Regina Powell, parcel 048141. And Regina Powell, parcel 048, one four five. Right-of-way permanent and temporary easements for the Crawford Creek Phase Two.
Second.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe that covers the gambit tonight. Any other motions?
I make a motion, we adjourn, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Adjourn.